Okay, guys, once we find out where we're getting started. So. All right, it is seven P M. I'd like to call this meeting to order while this meeting is being called in person. In consideration of ongoing COVID nineteen health concerns, we are also offering the option for the public to participate through Zoom or first. Is registered on how to participate virtually are included in the calendar items listed on the front page of the machine gas load. This is the government. I'm. One patient. Folks, please go along.
Boltinghouse, Loudon.
Yeah.
Riard, Riard.
Here.
Inman.
Here.
Josie Davis.
Right first up on our agenda is public hearings. First of all, here are my D C D administration Brian Scott calling his presentation and members will probably like make a comment on how to support public hearing with regards to twenty two thousand units. Now we're doing. You are participating through Zoom and either find your comments in the chat theater and leave a wow wow for them to be like fake and we'll call you if you think maybe your comment is appropriate. These are hard for your comments or comments are visible to everyone. If you are part of our influence and your client, they can take their management's decision and we'll call you to let blood turn to me. We may recall that you say your name to be allowed to be on the record. Also, we can have others trying to speak and please follow. I need to confirm something that they have been before here. Right?
All right, thank you, Mayor. So the holidays are upon us and it's time for holiday cheer and budget amendments. So we are at the end of our fiscal year. The auditors were here a couple of weeks ago doing initial field work. And we were in the process of kind of cleaning up our books before we close out the twenty twenty two fiscal year. And part of that process is adopting a budget amendment. And this is required by state law. So when we adopt a budget, we adopted within accordance of state law, which is K S A seventy nine two nine two. And that adoption establishes maximum expenditure authority for the budget and for the various funds within the budget. If we exceed that maximum expenditure authority, then we have to amend the budget to increase the maximum expenditure authority so we're not exceeding that. In this particular case, we have two funds where you want to do that. Uh, the first is the TIF fund and the TIF fund, the initial maximum expenditure authority. We adopted the budget last year at this time was seven hundred sixteen thousand. And we'd like to amend that to uh seven hundred eighty five thousand. So an increase to seven hundred eighty five thousand. The other is the street sales tax fund. The initial expenditure authority was one million five hundred twenty four thousand three hundred. And we're wishing to ex- uh extend that to one million seven hundred thousand even. Um, the reason why we do this that sometimes is especially with TIF, it's difficult to predict exactly what the revenues will be at the time we create the budget, which is usually in the summer twenty twenty one, about a year and a half before. And then with the um street sales tax. We actually um renewed our street sales tax. So when we created the twenty twenty two budget, we weren't sure that we'd be able to renew our street sales tax. So we created enough revenue to fund some crapple projects. We had some debt and then we set aside a large fund balance that allowed us to make one more debt expenditure in twenty twenty three that would pay off the bonds that were due in twenty twenty three and close those out. Luckily, that sales tax was renewed at a higher rate. So we're now able to fund more money, more capital projects. So we wanted to increase that expenditure authority to allow us to do that. So that is the budget amendment in a nutshell.
That's from the public. City Council and online. Okay, that will impose our public hearing. We don't have any special presentations. We do not have any special presentations, so we will add the things that's on. We do not have any items for the influence of those are on this evening, so we'll move into our consent agenda. Our consent agenda will be Irish tonight. Our council committee is met on November second and fully discussed our. From the consumer and fully discuss these items. They can disagree that the items listed on the consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under the. If a council member or member of the public, like I know, when you come to the consent agenda, they may request that at this time, not.
Mayor, I move the city council adopt the consent agenda as printed items four A through four L.
Give a motion of second. Any questions? Problem, please go along.
Pink. Crane.
Yeah, I, sorry.
Loudon. Josie. Inman. Davis. Boltinghouse. Riard. Thomas. Motion carries.
All right, we now move into your comments. When you have your comments, like many comments, like. Not in the. Seeing no audience, seeing nothing online, nothing online. So we'll move into our action panels from the planning mission. We have six items coming forward from the planning mission. The first is considerate, my local preliminary development plan, the one Mary Platt, and especially the current Nelson wastewater treatment facility located at forty eight hundred. So we need to provide.
Mayor, I'm going to ask Patrick Denning to come forward. We have a very brief presentation on what's being proposed. Um, this is more just for the record than anything else. And then Ms. Cannella will give her reports.
You're good, you're good. Yeah, I'm starting there. And I might have to have you, can I advance from here?
No.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, my name is Patrick Denning. I'm the Assistant Chief Engineer uh of existing infrastructure with Johnson County Wastewater. Uh, with me tonight is Chief Engineer of Johnson County Wastewater, Aaron Witt and Mike Kalas with H D R Engineering, who's part of the design team on this project. Uh, we spoke a couple of weeks ago to give a project update on this project. Um, and and at that time presented uh the intergovernmental agreement, which ultimately was agreed to. Not much has changed since then, but we are here tonight. Um, you can go to the next slide for these three things, the preliminary development plan, the preliminary plat and the special use permit for the Nelson wastewater treatment facility. Um, this is just the brief outline, um, and I'll go through it uh very quickly. So um, if there's any questions or you'd like me to slow down on a specific thing, please let me know, but I don't want to waste your time for stuff we've already discussed previously. Uh, again, the interlocal agreement was approved by the city council and and approved by the Board of County Commissioners um in December. So that's in place now, so I appreciate all the efforts to get that done and city staff to work with us to to approve the interlocal agreement. Um, again, uh Nelson is a wastewater treatment facility that serves more than just Mission. Mission is in red, so it serves all of all of Mission, but it also serves many other entities in Johnson County from the county line and state line to about Quavera Road and eighty seventh Street. We have to do this project to replace aging infrastructure. This plant was originally constructed in the forties. The treatment technology will not meet the future water quality requirements that the state is requiring us to meet, especially for nutrients like nitrogen, phosphorus, ammonia. Um, and it is also our first step in providing greater wet weather treatment capacity. Uh, we have done several public outreach events. The first was in twenty twenty one where we wanted to hear from the public what their concerns were. And then in twenty twenty two, uh, we 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 were ha- at about thirty percent design and we were able to uh show much of the material that we're showing tonight, what the facility would look like. And understand if we've answered questions or not from the public and get and get their feedback. Uh, we also have a website available, uh, J C W Nelson dot com, where um people can go and get the latest project information, contact information, those kinds of things. So on each of those public outreach events, we took surveys. So on the left, for example, was the initial public outreach event in twenty twenty one. So the public on the on the final uh facility, they were interested in water quality and odor control, for example. And so then the one on the right are the results from the public outreach survey the second time the year later that we did in October. And what this said is, did we answer your questions? And so like on that one, odor control and water quality were the two that people said, we we understand what you're doing there. So um, that that was a good result. Some of the ones we didn't rank as high in were noise and light pollution. And that's primarily because we have, we don't have those pieces quite done yet and we didn't present very much information on that. The lighting study and the noise study will be presented at the time of the final development plan sometime next year. This is the existing facility from the southwest. It's approximately forty acres. Yep. And then the new facility, um, the new facility uh includes the new treatment technologies that are a little bit more compact. So we were able to get the facility a little bit more to the northeast, um, away from more of the permanent residences with the wastewater processes. And we were able to buffer um the the facility between the wastewater facility and the residences with some more uh green spaces and the administrative buildings. I'll show that more in a minute. This is an example of the administrative building we propose. This is what will house the the operators that work there, the approximately thirty five uh individuals that run the facility. So we're going with a contrasting blonde bricks and I'll show you why in a minute. And there's also um, you know, we want to make it a nice facility. So we've got an amount of glass in there and so forth to keep it um a lot of daylight and so forth. And go to the next one. These are kind of what the process buildings will look like. So these are examples. So again, bronze brick masonry, so it will last a long time and is durable. And then structural concrete for water structures that hold water. So um, those are, that's where you see the the concrete looking structures, they hold water. This facility is our dewatering facility. It's in the middle of the of the plant site. It's newer than a lot of the buildings on this facility and to save money, we're going to reuse this building. So we've got this giant building in the middle of the site that's blonde brick. So we're kind of tied to that for the uh the other architectural features and that's kind of what sets it. The landscaping plan, this is what was presented in the October sixth open house. Um, the grading on the site will be some, a little bit lower than it is now, so that will sink treatment processes a little bit. And then we're proposing to berm the area along Noll, which is to the right of this, to the right of the screen. And on the berm plant of various uh various kinds of trees, as well as have a wrought iron fence or a wrought iron looking fence along um that as well. And then also to the south along forty ninth street um to help uh screen the facility. In the planning commission meeting, it was also requested that we look at potentially adding some trees at the uh Lamar and Fox Ridge Drive entrance there. And um, we've agreed to look at that. There is a lot of underground infrastructure there and overhead um Casey Pino lines there. So we might be a little limited in what we can do, but we we can look at that in the in the for the final development plan. Uh, so on the bottom left of the screen are some circles, um, top to bottom, it goes one to three. And these are just two shots of street views of what the the new facility will look like, both with young trees and older trees. And I believe I mentioned last time that one of the advantages of doing this rendering kind of at our thirty percent is we realize the the young trees are pretty sparse until they grow up and fill in. And so um, before the final development plan, we'll come back and augment this with some bushes and grasses that'll get bigger faster and and take up more of that space. Ultimately, though, we don't want to put the trees closer together, they won't be healthy long term. And go to the next one. This is the same deal from forty ninth street. So again, the berm with uh the fence and the trees, which will um, which will fill in nicely, but again, in the in the immediate aftermath, the construction will need to augment that some. Uh, the this is the odor control plan that presented this previously as well. So the current facilities on the left, the red indicates our trickling filters, which is the existing technology at the facility. Those can generate odors from time to time. The green are the facilities on site that currently have odor control and the blue are the administrative facilities. So those are our offices and so forth. So what we try to do with the new facility is get the administrative facilities between the wastewater processes and the residents. So that acts as a little bit more of a buffer from any smells or noise or things like that. And then the green, um, all the green facilities will have odor control um associated with those. So this is noise mitigation. Um, this is post-construction, so this shows the final facility. The red are the odor control fans. So the odor control systems will have fans that pull the air through the systems. Those will all be in sound enclosures um to meet the to meet the city's requirements for sound. We also have a blower building with uh aeration blowers that provide air to the system. Those will be inside a building. Um, we have a a nap, a gas flare because the process does create methane. And then um, there's also truck traffic, which is denoted in the green. Excuse me. We conduct, we conducted some preliminary uh noise studies around the facility. We're in residential zone, so the city ordinance is fifty decibels at the property line. Our current background noise was fifty to sixty when we did the sound study, just a couple of days putting sound meters out there. Which surprised us a little bit because I I didn't um think it was that noisy of of facility. During construction, we do anticipate that there will be times when we'll be in the fifty to seventy decibel range based on our initial modeling. Because we are going to encounter rock and have to break out rock. And there's also a significant amount of demolition that's got to occur on the site, which will create noise. So again, those are things we're aware of and we're going to um present the noise study with the final development plan to get to get more certainty there and what we're looking at. As you're probably aware by now, we have started our project in the road to uh get the pipeline under Fox Ridge Drive. That has begun, we've started the installation of that. Our goal is to be out of the city's way in April so that they can do their reconstruction project. The pink line is the construction entrance into the facility from I thirty five into uh the facility along Fox Ridge Drive. And then um, excuse me. We uh will add the traffic signals over the interstate in the summer to facilitate construction traffic. This is going to be a phased project, so um at the bottom of the facility where the teal color is, we're actually going to start the civil work for that in January. So we're going to have to start preparing the site early to get all this done. And between twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven, we'll be building various processes while we keep the old plant running. And then in twenty eight and twenty nine, we will be starting up the new plant, making sure we're good with it, and then we're going to demolish the old plant. So most of the construction will actually be done by the end of twenty seven, but by the time we get everything started up and then all the old stuff taken out, the project won't really be completed until probably twenty thirty. So a long project. I have the animation again, you can click on the bottom if anyone's interested. Um, this is the same one you saw before. Again, starting off of Fox Ridge Drive. And we have a slightly new site entrance. There's a couple of tanks you'll see here coming up. Behind those and to the left is the existing building that we're going to maintain, the one that has that step in it. That's the building that will remain. The rectangular basins are the new treatment process. The uncovered circles are the clarifiers that have the almost completely treated water. It just needs to be disinfected so it doesn't generate odors. The circles that have the truss looking things on them, that is the raw wastewater that um could generate odor, so it's odor controlled. And now this is just along Noll here. That entrance is existing now. And this is forty ninth street. Then it takes you to space, yeah. Do you want to do your thing or?
I've got kind of a froggy throat too, so. Oh, actually, Brian, would you mind grabbing my water quickly, just in case? I think I'm going to need it. Um, okay, so I'm, do you want me to just go through all three, the preliminary development plan, the plat and the and the special use permit? Okay, got it, thank you. Okay. So first we have the Nelson preliminary development plan, case twenty two thirty one. Uh, the project's located between Noll and Lamar on approximately fifty two acres, about in the north northernmost border of Mission um in Kansas City, Kansas, and then the easternmost border with Roland Park. Uh, the site is the existing wastewater facility with industrial uses to the north and single family uses to the west and to the south. And the project is um a total redevelopment of the site, which will um take place over several phases um until about um early or late twenty twenty nine to early twenty thirty. Um. Just wanted to show an overlay of the existing aerial with a little diagram that I did of the interior road network. Um, with the proposed or the proposed interior road network and the proposed facilities. It should be kind of toward the beginning of the staff report on this one. No, it's not the staff report. Okay, that's okay. This, there it is, it's go down one more, one more, one more, keep going down. Yeah, keep going down. Okay, um, so there's not an aerial with the, basically, I wanted to show you that the internal network um has shifted a bit inside the facility. And the treatment facilities themselves are situated more northeastern on the site, whereas now some of the tanks, as you can see on this aerial, are closer to the residential uh neighborhood. And so those are shifted away now toward mostly all of it is toward the north northeast. Um, and that may have been in your packet, I'm not sure if that made it in or not, but um, that shows kind of the um redevelopment toward the northeast. Um, also, let's see, J C W proposes um the architectural style, the new buildings that are consistent with the existing structure structures that will remain on site. Um, the um, they're trying to minimize the impacts to the existing operations during construction, as well as minimizing the impact to the surrounding community. Um, by uh limiting tree removal um to the extent possible and adding new trees, um adding new fencing for aesthetic and security purposes. Minimizing long expanses of external piping on the um interior of the site um that would be visible off site, off site. Um, and improving the site by adding traffic improvements with a signalized ramp at a hundred uh I thirty five and twenty fourth street and a left turn head at Lamar and Fox Ridge. Um, they will also consider with this photometric study that will come with the final development plan, they'll consider um dark sky standards, but due to security purposes, um, you know, that may not be feasible. They'll evaluate that with the final development plan. Um, other sustainability measures on site include um efficiency motors and automated controls to reduce electricity consumption, along with L E D fixtures. Treated wastewater reuse, on-site methane gas reuse in lieu of natural gas and um reduced vehicle idle time at the new traffic signal. Um, also reduced organic material through efficient treatment systems and reduced ammonia, nitrogen and phosphorus, which will improve waterways locally and downstream. Um, we have requested that the applicant meet with the Sustainability Commission and so that will be forthcoming um in the next few weeks or so. Uh, J C W also worked with cities to alter its schedule according to um uh roadway improvements that we already had planned. So they'll be doing the force main in the first phase um according to when we were going to be doing those road improvements on Fox Ridge. Um, J C W also worked with staff to include the new sidewalk for pedestrian circulation, um external to the site on Lamar, south of Fox Ridge. Um, they also, Patrick mentioned the extensive public outreach to gain input. Uh, this project does conform with the comprehensive plan as an existing continuous use. Um, for the municipal code, this property is zoned R one and because it's an established and continued use, staff did not feel that we needed to rezone the property. Um, and that it's not expected to affect nearby property values. So um, we did consider the stipulations under M P industrial park, however, as guidelines, which include regulations for buildings, parking, drives, open space. Um, the harmony with the surrounding neighborhood and closing operations and storage materials within building structures, mitigating smoke, gas and noise emissions. Requiring a special use permit for the pump station. Um, and a separate section of the code that addresses landscaping with parking areas, within parking areas. Um, so staff concludes that the project conforms with the municipal code and the citywide design guidelines. Uh, the landscape plan that Patrick went over um does indicate that there will be about fifty five trees removed with this project, but twenty, two hundred and twenty three will be replanted to screen the property. Um, per code, uh, we needed to have four hundred and twenty nine trees, but because of the existing trees that will remain, there's an additional one thousand seven hundred and twenty seven trees that are credited toward that per code. So they exceeded the amount of trees on site that we needed. However, like he mentioned too, in the planning commission uh hearing, um, one of the commissioners really would like to see um and and another reiterated the fact, would like to see some screening at Lamar and Fox Ridge if feasible. We'll discuss that with them and see if it's possible um with underground utilities at the time. Um, also Birmingham will help screen on the east and south side. Um, public comments during the planning commission uh hearing concerned the impact to Noll Park from the Roland Park residents. They wanted to make sure that 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 park on their side of the city um is not impacted during construction or afterward. Um, and also resident to the south was concerned with the regrading and redevelopment of this site because he's had flooding problems in the past. Um, and J C W acknowledged acknowledged the concern for the park, reiterated that construction traffic would not impede the use of the park. And the redevelopment should not increase the risk of flooding. Other comments from the planning commission consider, were considering um hardy drought tolerant and disease resistant landscaping, odor control, noise mitigation, the number of employees, uh whether that would increase um during and after construction. And then the traffic during construction. Um, as Patrick mentioned, odor control and noise mitigation, that those studies will come out through the F D P, um the final development plan. And um, he stated at the meeting that the increase in employees would not be significant with this project. Um, after the site was constructed and that traffic during construction would be mitigated um pretty much during um during the entire time through the phasing, but also through the traffic measures. Um, mitigation measures that they're going to um uh apply. So the planning commission voted eight to zero to recommend approval of case twenty two thirty one with one commissioner absent. And I'll move on to case twenty two thirty two with the preliminary plat. Um, this. And I'll move on to case twenty-two thirty-two with the preliminary plat, um, this is a replat. Um, there's three subdivisions as part of this plat currently, the Oakwood subdivision, Walnut View subdivision. And Jessup Second subdivision, um, which consists of thirteen parcels. They will be replatted into one lot and the project boundaries are not expected to expand, um, the area beyond existing. Um, a thirty-foot right-of-way is dedicated to the city along Noll, and that's what you'll be considering tonight as well. Uh, staff did determine that all appropriate public easements and right-of-way are in accordance with the stipulation set forth in municipal code. Planning commission nor the public had comments on the plat and the planning commission voted eight to zero to, uh, recommend approval. And then for the special use permit, case twenty-two thirty-three, uh, municipal code at section four-forty-one eighty stipulates that sewage pump stations may be located in any district. Uh, with a special use permit under consideration of fourteen criteria, we won't go through all of those, but some of them are notable here. Um, with consideration for the character of the neighborhood, suitability to the property for the use. The extent to which the use would be, uh, would detrimentally affect nearby properties, the benefit to public health and safety, conformance with the comprehensive plan, need for use in the community and economic impact. It's staff's determination that the project meets all fourteen criteria to grant the special use permit in perpetuity. As long as the site is continuously used as a waste treatment facility, and the planning commission voted eight to zero with one absent, uh, to recommend approval of this case. And that's my staff report for the Nelson.
I had a comment. Could, could you explain to me, are there any other, within the region, are there any other properties or areas that are zoned R-one that have an industrial facility on them?
I don't know the answer to that question, I can look that, look into that for you and get back with you.
Does that, does that seem?
So we looked into this because we were concerned, actually, um, at first when they brought the project to us, they did, um, suggest that it would be rezoned. Um, we felt that that was unnecessary and might actually be detrimental to property values, possibly, um, to rezone it to industrial. Really, to keep it the way that it is and to have a continued use with the current zoning is, is feasible, because there's, it's never going to not be in operation, so we can continue this use. Um, we were more concerned with property values with, with a rezoning at this point, um, just for if, if, you know, you have, um, assessors come out and assess, and there's, uh, some program that they're using to look at zoning surrounding properties, if that's just an item that they plug into their program. That may detrimentally affect property values, so, you know, we did, I actually did call the county and ask them if that would be the case. And she didn't think so, so we thought, let's just leave good enough alone and leave this, um, this zoning district as is. Oh, no, not in Mission, you mean in the region or? I just kind of summed that up in this presentation now, but the, um, staff report does go through that at, at length. That provision.
One more question, were any single residential properties purchased as a result of this creation and expansion of the treatment system? Thank you.
No, no.
Davis. Thomas. Inman. Boltinghouse. Josie.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Loudon.
Yes.
Ryan.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Right, I would now entertain a motion on the preliminary plat.
Okay, mayor, I move that city council approve the preliminary plat Nelson wastewater treatment facility at forty-eight-hundred Noll Avenue. Planning commission number, or case number twenty-two thirty-two Johnson County wastewater district applicant.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
Ryan.
Aye.
Thomas. Loudon.
Yes.
Boltinghouse. King.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
Loudon, I'm sorry, Davis.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and I would now entertain a motion on the special use permit.
Uh, mayor, I move city council approve the special use permit Nelson wastewater treatment facility at forty-eight-hundred Noll Avenue. Planning commission case number twenty-two thirty-three Johnson County wastewater district applicant.
We have a motion, do we have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
Boltinghouse. Davis.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Thomas. Inman. Ryan.
Aye.
Loudon.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the next item for consideration from the planning commission is consideration of a preliminary and final plat for the Shops of Benson located at fifty-six-hundred Johnson Drive, Carrie, will you please provide your report?
Thank you, mayor, uh, case number twenty-two dash thirty-six. Um, this is, uh, at the northwest corner of Johnson Drive and Maple, uh, consisting of two structures and three businesses, or three business owners, um, there's five businesses actually in that, in that building. The diagonal parking along Johnson Drive and head-in parking on Maple, um, it's currently platted as one lot under sole, under ownership. Um, the property is being sold to three existing tenants, the Urban Prairie Coffee, Sand Hills Brewery and Springboard Creative. Um, Urban Prairie and Sand Hills Share a Common Wall. The property will be replatted as three separate lots with this plat. Currently, there are recorded easements and deeds that dedicate the diagonal parking to the city and the public realm from the parking to the building facade is recorded easement to allow the city can, to construct and maintain the sidewalk and public right-of-way. Um, the plat will record these separate easements and deed property, um, into the plat itself, to kind of clean it up. Um, this is a combined preliminary and final plat to record the dedicated right-of-way, and staff has determined the plat meets the municipal code for conformance with the comprehensive plan, it supports good land use planning. Allows for future development and is consistent with good traffic engineering and safety standards. Staff is also required to sign party wall agreement between Urban Prairie and Sand Hills to be on record, um, which the applicant has provided. Staff's determined that all appropriate public easements and rights of way are in accordance with the stipulation set forth in municipal code, and the planning commission voted eight to zero to recommend approval of this preliminary and final plat.
All right, is that your, that's included your report, yep, is there any member of the public would like to comment on this issue? Seeing none, do we have any council discussion? All right, I would now entertain a motion on the preliminary and final plat.
Mayor, I move that city council approves preliminary plat, and final plat of Shops of Benson, fifty-six-hundred Johnson Drive, planning commission case number twenty-two thirty-six Benson Living Trust applicant.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
Davis.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Loudon.
Yes.
Boltinghouse. Josie.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yes.
Ryan.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, the next item for consideration from the planning commission is consideration of a preliminary and final plat for Azura Credit Union located at sixty-five, sixty-seven fifty-one Johnson Drive. I'm losing power. Okay, one second, technical difficulties. Okay. Alrighty, um, all right, case twenty-two twenty-eight preliminary and final plat, um, this is another exciting one. We have, um, a plat at the location of the former Ro, uh, Runza on Johnson Drive and Riggs at the southwest corner. Um, it's the proposed site of the new Azura Credit Union, uh, with site improvements that the planning commission approved in its October twenty-eighth meeting. Uh, the proposal is a parcel, uh, to the west that's currently unplatted. And a parcel to the east that's platted, they'll be combined and consolidated into two part, the two parcels will be consolidated into one lot. Existing structure and footprint will remain the same, but the building will be remodeled and vehicular circulation, uh, will be altered to create a counterclockwise movement around the building to new teller machines on the south side. The existing entrance on Johnson Drive will be closed off and landscaped. Leaving one, uh, entrance and exit on Riggs to improve the pedestrian safety on Johnson Drive, where the sidewalk will be widened as requested by staff. Um, uh, therefore, the existing retaining wall will also be reconstructed a few feet to the south as well, eliminating the existing parallel parking on the north side abutting Johnson Drive, as per Johnson Drive design guidelines. With those site improvements and widening the sidewalk, Azura is dedicating an additional seven feet of right-of-way to the city for your consideration with this plat. And staff determined that all appropriate public easements and rights of way are in accordance with the stipulation set forth in the municipal code. Planning commission voted eight to zero to recommend approval of case twenty-two twenty-eight with one commissioner absent, and that's it, that's all I have on that. All right. Uh, thank you, is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this issue? Seeing none, we'll open the floor for council discussion, any council discussion, yeah, Ben?
Do, do I recall correctly that this will be subject to a non-conforming situation permit?
Yes.
And would that come before the council?
Actually, it was a site plan, yes, between the planning commission. Because it was a site plan, the non-conformance.
Yeah, we typically don't bring non-conforming situation permits to the council for approval, just the planning commission.
Okay.
There's, oh, well, yeah.
Yeah, and they did approve it.
Okay.
Eight to zero, yeah.
I just couldn't remember if there was more, more to this one for us.
Yeah, this, this came with the plat, there's actually, as Carrie was describing, two parcels, and we just asked them to combine it and dedicate a little right-of-way along Johnson Drive.
So, yeah, with this, with a, just a straight-up site plan, um, it could just gets approved by planning commission straightaway. So this would just be with the dedication of right-of-way, the preliminary and final plat on this one.
Okay.
For council. Okay, I would now entertain a motion on the preliminary and final plat.
Mayor, I move that city council approve the preliminary and final plat for Azura Credit Union at sixty-seven fifty-one Johnson Drive. Planning commission case number twenty-two thirty-eight Azura Credit Union is the applicant.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Yes, Debbie?
Just a quick comment, this may be a good time to go back and look at our recommendation for putting a crosswalk in that area with another business that uses that type of activity. Thanks.
Well, so of course, we have a grant that we're about to receive from Mark. To look at reconstruction of Johnson Drive from Lamar west to Metcalf. And that'll be part of the, the planning process for that construction project.
Okay, Robin, can you please call the roll?
Inman.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Boltinghouse. Loudon.
Yes.
Thomas. Josie.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And just, just one note for council, we do have, um, some prepared motions, but had a, I think, a copying difficulty, so if you don't have a copy of the motions in front of you and want to make a motion, just raise your hand and Emily will bring you sample language in case you would like to use it, so. We do have one final item for consideration tonight from the planning commission, which is consideration of an amendment to the Main Street District One MS One zoning regulations pertaining to drinking establishments, and let's see, Brian, are you taking this one?
I am gonna take this one.
All right.
Thank you, mayor. Okay, so the MS One Main Street District is essentially those properties that, uh, front Johnson Drive between Lamar and Birch Street, this will be past Noll. And, um, the intent of the zoning district is for traditional downtown business activities, um, including restaurants, entertainment, specialty retail. Uh, arcades, convenience retail and drinking establishments. The code currently requires a special use permit for drinking establishments or clubs. Uh, further in the code, under zoning stipulations, there's a provision that, uh, drinking establishments and food and service establishments that serve alcoholic beverages. Are required to have thirty percent food sales. And then they're also required to have a special use permit if within two-hundred feet of a residentially zoned property. Um, so the language is a little bit out of date with requirements of the county, the thirty percent food requirement. Was something that was instituted by the county, and that was repealed recently by the voters. And then the, uh, there's a conflict between the special use permit when that's required, if it is required. So, staff is proposing an amendment to the MS One zoning district that would essentially eliminate the requirement for a special use permit. Unless the drinking establishment is within two-hundred feet of residentially zoned districts R-one through R-six. And they're also proposing the elimination of the thirty percent, uh, sale foods. And then, um, there's also a provision in the ordinance for, under the special use permit, we're completely eliminating that provision. Uh, that's, doesn't end in a special use permit, which is chapter four-forty-five of the zoning code. And then there's some revisions at the end of the ordinance that makes modifications to the alcohol licensing and permitting codes that just kind of aligns with special use permit requirements of the zoning provisions, so. That is it in a nutshell, happy answering questions.
All right, is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this issue? Seeing none, we'll open the floor for council discussion. Any comments or questions from council? All right, I would entertain a motion on the zoning amendments.
Mayor, I move that the city council approve the drinking establishment amendment, case number twenty-two thirty-five City of Mission applicant.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call roll.
Thomas.
Yes.
Ryan.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Boltinghouse. King.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
Loudon.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next we will move into committee reports, council member Boltinghouse, will you please provide a report from the Finance Administration Committee?
Yes, thank you, mayor, the F and A committee met on December fourteenth and considered six items. The meeting minutes, twenty-twenty-three legislative priorities, carrot renewal, property The meeting minutes, twenty-twenty-three legislative priorities, carrot renewal, property casualty, general liability, insurance renewal, DTI renewal, DAC recommendations. And twenty-twenty-three cereal malt beverage license renewals were approved under the consent agenda earlier this evening. So the twenty-twenty-three budget adoption, a resolution to spend according to the twenty-twenty-three budget. And twenty-twenty-two budget amendments will be considered under the regular agenda. Item seven A is the twenty-twenty-three budget adoption. As part of our annual budget process, the city takes formal action to adopt the twenty-twenty-three budget by ordinance. This ordinance represents one of two ordinances that are considered each December to finalize the city's annual budget and to provide expenditure authority. There are no changes to the twenty-twenty-three budget approved by the city council in September twenty-twenty-two. Mayor, I move the city council approve an ordinance adopting the twenty-twenty-three budget of the city of Mission, Kansas.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, is there any council discussion? Yes, Debbie?
Just a comment, staff did a phenomenal job in keeping us apprised of any changes and updates. And the budget came, became such a flowing activity that they did such a phenomenal job, just a, thank you.
All right, seeing no further comments, Robin, please call the roll.
Loudon. Riard.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Boltinghouse. Thomas.
Yes.
Inman. Motion carries.
Item seven B is a resolution to spend according to the twenty-twenty-three budget. As part of our annual budget process, the city council takes formal action in December. To authorize and direct the city administrator to spend according to the adopted budget. And in compliance with city council policy one O two. This ordinance will authorize the city administrator to spend in accordance with the approved annual budget. Mayor, I move the city council approve an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to make expenditures in accordance with the adopted twenty-twenty-three annual budget.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
King.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Boltinghouse. Thomas. Riard.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
Loudon.
Yes.
Davis.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then item seven C is the twenty-twenty-two budget amendments. This op, the adopted annual budget establishes the maximum authorized budget expenditure for each fund for that particular fiscal year. Exceeding these expenditures without formally amending the budget is a violation of Kansas statute pertaining to municipal budgeting. It's KSA seventy-nine dash twenty-nine twenty-nine A. Furthermore, state laws require that a public hearing be held when amending the budget. A public hearing was held tonight and notice was published in the legal record on December sixth, two thousand twenty-two. The budget amendment is the result of additional revenues realized and increased costs for capital projects. Property tax increment received was higher than what we had budgeted in the TIF fund. Uh, the intri, the increment is contractually due to the developer to help reimburse for certain development costs. Additional expenditure is offset by the additional revenues. Bids for the twenty-twenty-two street preservation program funded from the street sales tax fund were higher than initially anticipated. This was due to the rising cost of construction that is being experienced across the nation. The city was able to offset those costs by utilizing additional fund balance and taking advantage of the higher sales tax rate. Three-eighth cent versus one fourth cent that was renewed by mission voters in the September twenty-twenty-one election. That it will go into effect March of twenty-twenty-three. March twenty-twenty-two. The budget amendment is established through resolution and will increase the expenditure authority in the twenty-twenty-two budget for the TIF fund. From seven hundred and sixteen thousand dollars to seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, a difference of sixty-nine thousand dollars. The budget authority for the street sales tax fund will increase from one million five hundred twenty-four thousand three hundred dollars to one million seven hundred thousand dollars. A difference of approximately one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Mayor, I move the city council approve the resolution to amend the maximum budget authority. For expenditures in the tax increment financing fund and the street sales tax fund for the twenty-twenty-two budget.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, any council discussion on this item? Seeing none, Rob, and please call the roll.
Boltinghouse. Josie.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yes.
Davis.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Loudon.
Yes.
Riard.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That concludes my report, mayor.
Great, thank you. Council member Josie, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Yes, thank you, mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on December fourteenth and considered eight items. The meeting minutes, mowing services contract, turf management and chemical application contract, waterworks park joint use agreement. Streetlight extension policy and streetlight installation contract award were approved under the consent agenda. Will now consider the twenty-eighteen building code adoption and the greenhouse gas inventory contract award under the regular agenda. So item seven D is the twenty-eighteen building code adoption. The International Code Council represents a diverse family of codes, providing minimum life safety requirements for the construction and maintenance of both commercial and residential buildings. The various disciplines in the construction industry are governed by separate codes, which specifically address that discipline. However, the codes work together to ensure requirement in one discipline does not conflict with a requirement in another discipline area. For that reason, the codes are introduced as a complete set. First on the agenda for action is adoption of the twenty-eighteen building codes. Mayor, I move the city council adopt the following set of building codes for the city of Mission. Twenty-eighteen international building code IBC, twenty-eighteen international fire code IFC. Twenty-eighteen international residential code IRC. Twenty-eighteen international plumbing code IPC. The twenty-eighteen international mechanical code IMC, the twenty-eighteen international fuel gas code. The twenty-eighteen international energy conservation code, the twenty-eighteen international property maintenance code. And the twenty-seventeen national electric code NEC NFPA section seventy.
All right. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments from any member of the public on this item? Seeing none, any further council discussion on the twenty-eighteen set of codes? Yes, council member Davis.
Yes, I just, we did receive some, um, correspondence from one of the members of our community. And, uh, I think, Brian, do you want to just clarify what the process is going to be for correcting? The, uh, twenty-eighteen inter, international energy conservation code?
Yes, Councilor Davis is referring to a couple of typos that were found at the last minute. So we'll just do a review of the ordinances and. Their script errors, basically. So we'll just make sure everything's correct before we give the mayor sign.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no further comments, Robin, please call the roll.
Riard.
Hi.
Loudon.
Yes.
Inman.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carries.
In addition to the ordinances adopting the twenty-eighteen codes, we also have a resolution for council's consideration. Signaling the intent to review and consider adoption of the two thousand twenty-one international energy conservation code. Mayor, I move the city council adopt a resolution outlining the rationale and commitment to review. The two thousand twenty-one international energy conservation code with a recommendation coming forward by the fourth quarter of two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Any members of the public who would like to comment on this item? Yes, Mr. Thede, if you'd like to come up to the podium. And if you could state your city of residence for the record.
Hello, my name is Josh Thede, I live here in Mission, Kansas. Mayor and council, thank you for being here tonight and thanks for the opportunity to speak on this issue. I think it is very important to have up-to-date codes and this specific resolution to adopt the twenty-twenty-one and, and research and look into it. Within the next year, I think is urgent and important for the citizens of Mission to have good buildings. U S Green Building Council says we spend almost ninety percent of our time indoors, having a healthy indoor environment with good insulation and good. Good indoor environment and good indoor air quality. Is directly related to the IECC. I highly recommend. And commend you for having this resolution in front of you and, and highly support this resolution to pursue IECC twenty-twenty-one. Especially with no weakening amendments and with the zero code and strengthening amendments. So that we can align with the city of Kansas City, Missouri.
All right, thank you. Any further public comments? Seeing none, um, we will open it up to council discussion and council discussion on this item. Oh, I'm sorry, we do have an online comment, I believe. From Mary English.
Hi, yes. Um, ca, do I have a camera that I can on?
We can hear you, but we just see your name currently.
Okay, okay, terrific. I'll just go ahead and read my statement then, thank you. Um, I tried to raise my hand before the last one, but I'll speak to this same topic, so I'll speak to it. Good evening, my name is Mary English, I live in Prairie Village, Kansas. I am the Building Performance Program Manager for Metropolitan Energy Center. Which is a non-for-profit that serves the entire region, including the city of Mission. Given that the city of Mission has been working in ways to cut carbon emissions, I was surprised to see the codes package before you this evening. Has the same weakening amendments that have been inserted into energy code packages around the metro for over a decade. And no, this is not a good thing. This is not staying consistent with the rest of the metro area, rather is just further entrenchment in the old way of doing things for our residential buildings. Especially now that Kansas City, Missouri has taken the lead on adopting the twenty-twenty-one IECC. Mission will be essentially standing still in the realm of building performance, leaving behind the ability to use better technology. To create homes that are comfortable, affordable, healthy and resilient as extreme weather events increase in our region. What you just voted on, on the IECC twenty-eighteen. Uh, energy code is amended to omit several important upgrades, including mandatory duct and infiltration testing. And adequate wall insulation for our climate zone. I've been an energy specialist for over fifteen years now and conducted hundreds of energy assessments. I've seen firsthand that weak building code, including houses built to code that very much looks like. The amended energy code you just voted on leads to extra expenses fixing problems after moving day. By compromising the package, uh, we are potentially sacrificing the good health of the residents. Including renters that have zero control over the efficiency attributes of their homes. But usually, for the vast majority of renters, yet still pay the penalty of inefficient homes. To be clear, energy codes are written to protect building occupants' health and wellbeing. Indeed, that is one of the big questions you need to, um, ask yourself as you consider this twenty-twenty resolution. Highly, uh, hope you do. Because is it find a burden building occupants with higher utility bills, comfort and related repairs and potential health problems when the technology exists right now? To mitigate all those issues with better policy than is what in the twenty-eighteen amended codes package for the residential side. That our energy codes are very much about the American dream of the home. Do we build homes just for aesthetics? No, we have codes to ensure structural integrity, for example. Energy codes are recommended by the IECC as a whole package every three years to ensure that our houses are built to endure weather and our hottest and coldest months. Additionally, when builders use this, use the performance path rather than the prescriptive path. Costs associated with energy code are low and manageable. Columbia, Missouri, for example, has been on the unamended twenty-eighteen code for several years now and has seen their permit polls hold steady or increase. So better building codes have not led to a decrease in permit polls, which is a common claim. We just haven't seen this prediction bear out in reality. Last but not least, why is saving energy still viewed as a nice to have rather than a mission critical? As we freeze this week and yet another record-breaking extreme weather event, we are looking at the climate crisis directly in the jaw. Kansas City, Missouri moved to the twenty-twenty-one IECC code. With strengthening in amendments, in part because they see and very much feel this reality. We must not be afraid of change. M E C is here to support our region with training in this areas too, not just testify and move on. There's a lot of work we in the industry need to do in the whole region for the betterment of our entire community. Thank you for the time and I hope you advance to twenty-twenty-one sooner than later. Thank you.
Okay, any more public comments? Okay, I would open it up to council discussion. I did just want to make one note and clarification, um, carrying over from. The presentation we had at committee that Kansas City, Missouri is holding their implementation until July of the twenty-twenty-one. Energy code, and if we pass the resolution tonight, we'll be making a commitment to consider it by Q four. Of twenty-twenty-three, so we would not be that far behind Kansas City, Missouri potentially if council does decide to go that path. Any council discussion? Yes, Ben?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I, I wholeheartedly agree with, uh, Mr. Thede and his English and, and, and I believe that time is of the essence in adopting twenty-twenty-one IECC. But I, I also understand the need for staff to review. And, uh, and, and make sure that that's gonna work for our city and, and be implementable in a responsible way. But, um, just, just wanting to emphasize tonight that I'm, I'm very much of the belief that time is of the essence. The sooner we can do it, the better.
All right, any further council comment? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Riard.
Was there a motion?
Riard.
Aye.
Davis.
I thought we had a motion. We had a motion a second, is that correct? Yes.
Yes.
Sorry. Continue, thanks, Robin.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Nay.
Aye.
Yes. Motion carries.
And item seven E tonight is the greenhouse gas inventory contract award. In two thousand eight, Mission completed a greenhouse gas emission inventory. The city council approved fifteen thousand dollars funding for an update to the inventory in twenty-twenty, anticipating the twenty-twenty goal of a twenty percent reduction in carbon emissions. Set out in the initial climate action plan following the two thousand eight inventory. The inventory update was postponed due to staff transition and the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Those original funds are still available to be combined with the funds approved for sustainability work in two thousand twenty-three. Staff issued a request for proposals in October of this year and four firms submitted proposals. A selection committee included myself, uh, Sustainability Commission Chair Josh Thede, City Planner Carrie Caneller, and Assistant City Administrator Emily Randall. Interviewed the firms and recommend Lotus Engineering and Sustainability. The firm, based in Denver, provided a strong proposal supported by their interview and references. The initial proposal cost was twenty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety dollars. Staff requested an expanded proposal. That took advantage of some of the communication opportunities highlighted in the interview, including an in-person presentation to the community. Uh, that increased the total proposal amount to thirty-three thousand, uh, one hundred seventy-one dollars. If the contract is approved, Lotus is prepared to begin the work in January as suggested in the proposal and will complete the work in May. Therefore, mayor, I move the city council approve the proposal from Lotus Engineering and Sustainability. In an amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand one hundred seventy-one dollars. For an update to the greenhouse gas inventory for both municipal operations and at the community level.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yes.
Boltinghouse.
Yes.
Riard.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
Great. Next would be unfinished business, but we do not have any unfinished business on our agenda this evening, which would take us to new business, but we also do not have any new business on our agenda this evening. So there being no further business items for consideration, we will move into comments from the city council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone on the council have something they'd like to share? Yes, Trent and Debbie?
Thank you, mayor. I would just like to highlight a special anniversary that might have slipped through the cracks last week. Uh, last week was the two-hundredth anniversary of bilateral relations between the United States and Mexico. And I was lucky enough to go to a wonderful event at the Mexican consulate in Kansas City. Where they highlighted those ties, talked about the two nations' cooperation to this day. And some of the contributions from the Mexican-American community in this area. I just thought it was a lovely event, really wanted to, uh, highlight that. It's a partnership worth celebrating. And look forward to, uh, continued cooperation with them for years to come. Thank you.
Yes, Debbie?
I just want to commend the public work staff, the police. And Penn's phenomenal community center staff with a special highlight going to Cheryl Davis for all the work they did. For the adopted families program. They did phenomenal between food distribution and gifts. The community benefited greatly by seeing faces that they know in this room. So I just want to commend everybody who worked on that. And Cheryl, you did amazing work. We couldn't, no one could have done it without you. Thank you.
All right, next we have our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with the various activities of the boards, commissions and committees. First up is the Sustainability Commission with council members Kring and Thomas.
I was out with COVID and I know Debbie had something going on as well, so Emily, I don't know if you have a quick update on anything or, you know, Josh always would.
I actually was out ill as well, so Josh really truly is the only one, but I can, I did do the minutes. Um, and uh, just to report that we had a great year, um, had successful uh, budget planning this year and spent according to the budget. Um, really excited about continuing the scorecard in the new year, we had several successful projects in that and outreach and just it was kind of a, it was kind of a recap meeting. Uh, yeah, and then the holiday lights recycling is going on still at the community center and true, Mac True Value through January fifteenth, so people can bring their broken or unused lights to recycle.
And I did hear, I think that Terry Ball got another award related to the recycling fair, is that correct?
Go Green Environmental Fair Steering Committee, um, and the event itself was nominated for the Mark Solid Waste Management District um, as the best green event of the year and that ceremony was last Wednesday, so um, the steering committee was recognized for their great work and that event will be returning in twenty-twenty-three, so mark your calendars for September.
Good stuff, thank you. All right, next we have uh, Parks Recreation and Tree Commission, Councilmembers Loudon, Ryard.
Do you want to go already, okay. So um, Penn kind of updated us on Mohawk Park, things are moving along there. Um, he let us know that asphalt has been laid in Mohawk, poured footings for the bathroom and block and steel have been ordered, but we know things are just taking a little longer these days. Um, we also, um, he let us know that the recommendations for, on the feasibility study have been completed on the city's end and submitted back to pros. And a championship um, tree was decided for this year, as a reminder, you can submit your trees or other trees around the city. Um, um, and there's a way to fill it out online and everything. Um, but I don't know if we're allowed to say who yet publicly, if they've been contacted, so mom's the word, yeah, mom's the word, but um, they did vote on and decide on a tree, so, yeah, that's my update.
And I just said, I did have one quick note on Mohawk with all the crazy wind we've been getting, some of the plastic fencing blocking the drive has been blowing into Sixty-seventh Street, so I don't know if maybe we can secure that for the storm a little better. All right, next up we have Councilmember Boltinghouse on the Mission Magazine editorial board.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, the editorial board met last week and you might have received your current issue of the Mission magazine either today or yesterday, I know I got mine today. There's a nice cover story on there about Brothers Toys and Downtown Mission uh, that I know we all had a lot of fun kind of brainstorming together. The purpose of our meeting last week was kind of talking through story ideas in twenty-twenty-three, I think we have some really good things in the pipeline uh, at the risk of uh, stealing Denise's thunder, I will wait and let that appear naturally in the magazine, but I think needless to say, we've got some cool stories that will be coming through with a nice local angle, so.
All right, and we had a teaser from Debbie, but finally is Councilmember Josie with the Family Adoption Committee.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, yes, you, you all heard the, the, the main idea here that we had um, essentially the wrap-up to the Family Adoption Committee season uh, this week with the, the, the December event. Um, and I, I was just amazed, you know, we can spare the details, we'll have a wrap-up meeting in January and we can come back with some of the details, but it really is something to celebrate. I was um, awestruck walking down the hallway of the community center and this weekend when I popped into one of the rooms and I saw the gifts literally piled up to the ceiling, I mean, it was amazing. It's fantastic work, I appreciate everybody's help that worked on it and, and you all are to be commended uh, to the maximum degree, it was um, just fantastic to see that, so. We'll have a wrap-up meeting and, and look back over the entire year on January nineteenth and I'll look forward to a, a sort of a final report for that.
Great, uh, next up we have my report, this evening we have several appointments to consider for the Planning Commission, Sustainability Commission and Parks Recreation and Tree Commission. First, I put before you the appointments of Stuart Braden, Ward one, Robin Duclo, Ward four, Mike Lee, Ward four, Wade, Wayne Snyder, Ward one, and Charlie Tropedo, Ward three for the Planning Commission with terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the Planning Commission uh, appointments that you just listed.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, please color roll.
Thomas? Inman? Boltinghouse? Josie?
Hi.
Kring?
Hi.
Loudon?
Yes.
Ryard?
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, second, I put before you the appointments of Lynn Bain, Ward two, Andy Highland, Ward three, Ellen Parker, Ward three, and Josh Thede, Ward four, for the Sustainability Commission with terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, is there a motion?
Mayor, I approve, or I I move the approval of the recommendations of Lynn Bain, Andy Highland, Ellen Parker and Josh Thede to the Sustainability Commission with terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
I had one real quick.
Oh, sorry, Ben.
I just wanted to say it's, it's a list of people that I, I know um, mostly personally that have put a great deal of dedication and commitment into the Sustainability Committee and done fantastic things, I'm very excited to see this list wholeheartedly support it.
All right, Robin, please call the roll.
Hi.
Thomas?
Yes.
Boltinghouse? Josie?
Hi.
Kring?
Hi.
Loudon?
Yes.
Davis?
Hi.
Inman? Motion carries.
Right, and finally I put before you the appointments of Sarah Gritman, Ward two, Kim Ware, Ward three, and Angela Vandergriffett, Ward two, for the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission with terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move we approve the, your appointment of Sarah Gritman, Kim Ware and Angela Vandergriff to the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission, terms expiring uh, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Second. I did want to make one note about these appointments, so this is the board where we have two new members being appointed and the really exciting news uh, related to Sarah and Angela is that they have both lived in Mission for, I think it's less than a year and are really, really excited to jump in and get involved. Um, at least one of them got, got to meet every, a lot of people at um, the market and was really enthusiastic about the market and I think actually talked to a couple of council members and I think everyone's encouragement and being welcome and opening with new members in our community really fueled them getting involved, so, good job, everybody. Yeah, Hillary?
I know we have a, a few people coming off of commissions and I just wanted to encourage us if we are, don't already have planning in the works for some sort of volunteer appreciation, since there's some long-timers that are stepping, stepping down, it'd be nice to have a, a little celebration of their volunteerism over the years.
Great. All right, Robin, please call the roll.
Oh, we moved.
Yes. I have a.
Oh, sorry, I thought we had the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Davis?
Hi.
Josie?
Hi.
Loudon?
Yes.
Inman? Boltinghouse? Ryard?
Hi.
Kring?
Hi.
Motion carries.
And now we're without our city administrator tonight, but I don't know, Brian or Emily, if you have any updates that you'd like to share from the staff side?
Our city minister will be back next month, so. We'll be back to normal. Um, couple of announcements, we will be closed Friday, the twenty-third and Monday, the twenty-sixth, an observation of Christmas. And then again on Monday, the second, an observation of the New Year's Day. So we wish everybody a happy holiday. Um, in light of that, we have a pending storm coming into town. So Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer is gonna be flying tomorrow. Um, we are debating about closing the city facilities. So we'll make that call in the morning, we kind of look at the final weather report. I think Emily and I are both gonna be up in the wee hours of the morning watching the weather. Um, in the meantime, the public works crew is in full tilt this evening. So we had a crew come on late this afternoon. Plows are ready to go, they're ready to go, so they'll be out fighting the storm this evening. Um, we received notice from GFL or Solid Waste Hauler. They are planning to pick up trash tomorrow and Friday. So that, that's their goal as of four o'clock this afternoon. That could change depending on the weather. Um, if that is the case and they cancel trash service, we are asking all of our residents just to hold their trash for a week. So those folks that miss tomorrow or Friday, we'll get them next Thursday or Friday of next week, so. We're not gonna have them come in on a Saturday, Christmas Eve to pick up trash, so.
Seems reasonable.
Then we uh, we have always traditionally ended the last meeting of the year with a video kind of highlighting the year. We're doing something different this year, we're gonna actually do that through social media next week. More kind of aligned with New Year's and so I'll be looking for that, they'll be coming out next week through social media. And those are all our announcements, so you wish everybody happy holidays.
Thank you, Brian.
Same to all of you.
Then we don't have any need for an executive session tonight, so before we adjourn, I just want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missionks.org. Um, and I just wanted to say happy holidays to everyone and we'll see you in twenty-twenty-three and with no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.